Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our budget public hearing to order. Would you please call the roll?
Miller?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp? Commissioner Kemp? Merman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. Have a quorum?
And Commissioner Kemp is here also.
Okay, thank you. There are two public hearings scheduled for this evening. One on the capital improvement program or the CIP, and the second in the fiscal year 2021 millage rates and budget. Because of changes to the budget could impact the first year of the five-year CIP. I'm around everyone. If you're not speaking, put your mic, please mute your microphones. Because changes to the budget could impact the first year of the five-year CIP, it is appropriate to conclude the budget public hearing prior to concluding the CIP hearing. I would like to open the CIP public hearing and then entertain a motion to continue that public hearing to the conclusion of the public hearing on the budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner White to to continue the CIP public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Now, please call the roll for the budget public hearing.
Miller?
Yes, I'm here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Merman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. Have a quorum?
Thank you. I hope we don't have any power problems. It is stormy. It really is. So I hope we can get through this. Let's just pray we get through this before losing anybody. Yeah, it is bad. The purpose of tonight's public hearing on the budget is to state public comment on the millage rates and the budget prior to the board adopting millage rates and a budget for the fiscal year 2021. At a moment, the budget director will read into the record the changes, the change in the aggregate fiscal year 2021 budget rate from the aggregate rollback rate, after which he will briefly discuss the status of the budget. At that point, we will take public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the board will discuss any final changes to the millage or budget. If necessary, there will be a short break while the impact of the final changes is calculated. Finally, state law requires certain information to be read. Finally, state law requires certain information to be read into the record prior to the board adopting resolution on the millage rates and the budget. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kevin Brickley. Brickley?
Thank you. Commissioners, the calculated change in the millage represents a 5.13% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. State law requires that we also describe the reason for the increase over the rollback rate. The budget under consideration tonight reflects in part normal inflationary increases in the cost of doing business. It also reflects the need to provide local government services to a growing population, which includes ongoing funding for transportation, affordable housing, continued COVID-19 measures in response, statutory and contractual agreements, union contracts, technology upgrades, the sheriff's office, and certain other county needs. Before I talk about the status of the budget, I would like to turn it over to our county administrator, Bonnie Wise, for a few words.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, board. Before Kevin goes into the overview of the budget, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, the employees, the county attorney's office, and all of our citizens for working with us throughout this budget process. We've spoken a lot about our unprecedented circumstances, and I couldn't be more grateful for all that has been accomplished, especially in the last six months. After our last budget hearing, Commissioner White and I spoke about the million and a half dollars of one-time countywide funds that were available after the flagged items were identified. And given the great uncertainty that continues to exist and the pressures that continue on our revenues and the economy, Commissioner White agrees with staff's recommendation that we put the million and a half dollars into reserves and not apply it towards a millage reduction. For your information, that millage reduction would have resulted in lowering the property taxes $2.66 on a home with $250,000 of assessed value. Next year, when we hopefully have some more clarity, we could consider how to handle excess revenues. So I wanted to bring that to your attention as Kevin provides the budget overview. And hopefully Commissioner White accurately reflected our conversation. So I just wanted to share that all with you initially.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. I'm going to try to-
Hold on, Commissioner Brickley. Commissioner White, you wanted to say something?
Yes, I have my hand up. I apologize if it's not working. I just want to say that I concur with what Ms. Wise has said. I do think it's wise to put the million and a half in reserves if that's what the board agrees to do this evening. And I would just ask staff to be sure that the millage rate that's read into the record for the vote is the unadjusted one for the countywide.
Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Kevin to go through the budget overview.
Thank you. I will share a presentation. Hopefully that's showing. Commissioners, the budget the board will adopt tonight reflects the tentative budget approved last week as amended by updates and corrections that have been made. The FY21 budget is balanced. Additionally, the county continues to maintain its general aggregation AAA bond rating. The board, the budget you will vote on tonight reflects investments that are consistent with your strategic focus. The budget tonight is $7,971,000. It's a $447 million increase over FY20, 6.7% increase. The total budget, broken down into some large categories here, the $7 billion, $480 million is for sheriff operations, $365 million for enterprise funds, healthcare services, $231 million fire rescue, $204 million. And then our continued CARES Act funding, which will carry over from this year to next year, is $190 million. Those categories are 52% of the bars shown on the graph. We have a number of other things. Our human services at $134 million, Public Works $126 million. Our reserves are, and transfers and capital projects are shown at the bottom. Looking at the general fund, the countywide general fund. Here, this fund is $1.027 billion. The sheriff, which is mainly jail operations, $324 million. Other constitutional agents and agencies, $130 million. Human services, we're continuing to be very active, $56 million. Facilities maintenance, $47 million. Those four bars represent more than 50% of the countywide general fund. And you see a number of other areas, affordable housing, nearly $24 million. Pet resources, $13 million. Medical examiner, 6.7. Turning to our unincorporated area general fund, which provides services to unincorporated residents that are fire rescue is the largest, $198 million, and the sheriff, $153 million. That's primarily patrol. So those two public safety items account for $62 million of the unincorporated general fund. And then a number of other important areas follow but are a good bit smaller. Parks and Recreation, about $37 million. Code Enforcement, $9 million, and others. Here, we have the flag list, which was identified at your public hearing last week, last Thursday night. We have about eight flags that total $675,000. We had identified countywide funds that would be available of $2.5 million, leaving a balance of $1,825,000. Those flags can be accommodated if that is your pleasure. We are also exploring some other funding options for these in the future that may be something other than general fund as we move forward. And if we identify those, we will bring items to you to change the funding source to those alternatives. With that, I'll stop sharing my screen, and it would be appropriate to accept public comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brickley. We're not moving to public comment. We have some people that have signed up for public comment. Each person, we have three minutes to address the board. The first person is Mary Haysek.
I'm here. Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mary Haysek. I'm the executive director for the United Food Bank. I'm here with my grant writer to address any questions that anyone has on our capital request of $100,000. We're the United Food Bank located in Plant City, serving eight different areas, including Plant City, Brandon, San Jose, Dover, Cessna, Riverview, and Lithia. And we're here for a capital request for a new truck, a new electric foot lift, a pallet jack, seven computers, and a printer scanner.
Hello? Is that it, ma'am?
Yes, that's it. The other thing that I would like to say is that we're grateful for the report of the Hillsborough County Community Needs Assessment that validates what we're doing in our area and validates the needs that we have. It was generated by the USF College of Public Health.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Lee Chaminus.
Thank you very much. Do you know I am the grant writer for United Food Bank and Services in Plant City, and I am truly here to support Mary Haysek and their 18-member Board of Directors. And just wanted to be here if there are any questions regarding the capital request.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ellen Snelling.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ellen Snelling, I'm the board chair of the Hillsborough County Ente Droidline. And I'm here tonight to ask for funding to help expand our services during the coronavirus pandemic. Ente Droidline is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit whose mission is to implement strategies to prevent and reduce substance abuse in Hillsborough County. We have been serving children and families in the county for over 30 years. Our task forces include the Prescription Drug Abuse Task Force, Tampa Alcohol Coalition, Tobacco Free Partnership, Marijuana Task Force, and youth clubs, including students working against tobacco and youth making a difference. We operate with grant funding through the Florida Department of Health, Florida Department of Children and Families, Central Florida Behavioral Health Network, and other grants and donations. We use a public health approach to reduce substance abuse, recognizing that no institution or organization alone can address these issues. It is through strong community support and partnership that we can create sustainable change. A couple of our accomplishments are, we conduct DEA prescription drug takeback events where we have collected over 15,000 pounds of unwanted expired medications throughout the county and also provided the public with Zetara drug disposal couches and medicine lock boxes. We've provided a youth tobacco awareness course for students who received tobacco citations over the past 15 years, and we sponsor the annual Tampa Drugs Summit, and we've been doing that with Drug Free America Foundation for the past eight years. The coronavirus pandemic has impacted all of us. HCSA has been working diligently to develop new curriculum and convert all our classes and trainings to virtual. Greater need than ever for substance abuse prevention services because of the pandemic. There's social isolation, job loss, anxiety, stress, and depression, and there's increased use of alcohol and other drugs. We're in need of funding to expand our services over the next year and increase programs and serve more children and families safely. Specifically, we'd like to create a vaping course to accommodate young adults who receive vaping ordinance citations as well as developing marijuana citation class. The youth tobacco awareness class is being converted to virtual and updated using Stanford Medicine Tobacco Prevention Toolkit. And we're developing a course on vaping for parents. Another important focus we would like to expand is opioids and emerging trends. The opioid epidemic has worsened during the pandemic. Methamphetamine and cocaine abuse is on the rise. Our community needs up-to-date substance abuse education materials and training, and we would like to provide virtual town hall training in neighborhoods where the most overdoses are occurring, provide physician education on safe prescribing, as well as campaigns on medically assisted treatment and naloxone awareness. We are looking forward to collaborating with the Board of County Commission on these and other projects. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Next speaker is Gerald White.
Good evening, Commissioners. Gerald White, Hillsborough County community activist. First, I want to thank the county administrator, Bonnie Wise, and her entire staff, the Budget Department, for putting a solid budget together. I'm really pleased of the smooth transition from Mike Merrill to Bonnie Wise and how the new county administrator has hit the ground running and making sure everything is in order. I wanted to say, pay special attention to the Aging Service Department, Tracy. Outstanding report. I looked at it the other day on HTV 22 here in Tampa of the work that's going on related to the senior citizens in Hillsborough County. And I'm just overwhelmingly pleased with the results of the work of the Aging Service Department. So, Commissioner Chairman, if you will, please express one of your constituents' gratitude and appreciation for the outstanding work of the Aging Service Department. I also just wanted to let you know that I'm pleased that Commissioner White pulled the request for not putting that million plus in reserve. That's very important, and I agree with the decision of the administrator, recommendation, and the Commissioner's request to just pull that money. And I do support the flag item that's on the list here. We're in just a tough time, and everything's in order. The budget is solid as a rock. And I support the budget as read. So those are my comments. And it is great to be able to participate in a public hearing on the budget of Hillsborough County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll pass it on, Mr. White. Next speaker is Zulima Ramos.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Zulima Ramos with the Tampa Bay Housing Justice Committee, a group of over 150 residents. And as you all may know, we are in the most severe public health crisis of my lifetime. And people are really struggling, and punishing them for surviving just is not the answer right now. Jails, detention centers, and prisons are at particularly high risk of community spread of COVID-19. People inside cells and those that work around deserve to be safe from COVID. We need you, county commissioners, to recognize the humanity of all people, even those who have been put in cages during this pandemic and after. In the words of Dr. Angela Davis, "The prison functions ideologically as an abstract site into which undesirables are deposited." Relieving us of the responsibility of thinking about the real issues afflicting those communities from which prisoners are drawn in such disproportionate numbers. The prison relieves us of the responsibility of seriously engaging with the problems of our society. And so many studies and experience show that we reduce crime by eliminating poverty. We lessen violence by creating safe, healthy communities that don't have to fight over basic rights like food, water, and shelter. Our neighborhoods become safer when we invest in free housing, healthcare, accessible, inclusive education, childcare, clean energy, food gardens, public transit, harm reduction centers for drug users, and anything else that we desperately need instead of putting funds in the hands of Hillsborough County Sheriff. We, the committee, support freezing the HCSO budget and reallocating it to community services and crime reduction programs that have worked for decades, like cahoots, crisis assistance, helping out on the streets. Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office has a long history of misconduct and abuse. A former Hillsborough County Sheriff's deputy has filed a lawsuit claiming he suffered discrimination at the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office and retaliation by officials, including Sheriff Chad Cronister. Willie Edom Jr., who is black, was the subject of disparate treatment during his 23-year career at the Sheriff's Office due to systemic racism and for reporting illegal activity at the office. Edom joined the agency in '94 and was forced to resign in 2017. After a flawed Internal Affairs investigation and biased votes by a disciplinary review board that included Cronister, and in December of last year, Deputy Anthony Marrero sexually assaulted a woman in a homeless camp. He resigned but did not face criminal charges. And Marrero drove this domestic abuse survivor to the Tampa homeless camp where she was living, walked her into the woods, and sexually assaulted her. And this is just two of many examples-
Ramos, thank you very much, ma'am. Your time has run out, ma'am. Your three minutes are up. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker is Ashley Spring.
Hi. Hi, this is Ashley Spring, resident of Hillsborough County. I wanted to speak a bit on the fiscal year 2021 budget. I won't take up a lot of time because I know statistics are easy to find on the internet if that's something that you commissioners should choose to look up. But I'm troubled by the sheer amount of funds allocated to HCSO. You know, and also some, I feel some of the other, some of the other, the budget in other areas is a little high as well, particularly HCSO. And you can see how over the years it's growing and growing, which I know is a necessity. But when you look further down the budget in the boards and committees, you can see the Guardian Ad Lightam program is budgeted to have $607,000, I believe it is, to Hillsborough County Sheriff's Offices. I think it was $480 million. That's very disheartening to me. And I speak, I speak of myself, not of the Guardian Ad Lightam program or any other organization. But as a GAL, I donate my time to the county every month to ensure the safety and well-being of the children that I help oversee in the program. And I truly feel that if the county were to allocate more money to child services, that HCSO wouldn't need the rising budget that they have. We all know what the statistics say about foster children and and how often and frequently they enter the judicial, I mean, how often they are arrested. And I think it speaks a lot to pour money back into the community and into these children than it does to pour it back into HCSO. We need to solve the problem before it happens. And I think we can do that by allocating more money to child services and less money into the grand budget that Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office has. And that's all I wanted to bring up, but I hope that the Commissioners take into consideration what I've said. Thank you.
Najia Salman?
Yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Najia Salman. I'm a public policy student at St. Petersburg College. I would like to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. And I would also like to appreciate Mr. Kevin Brickley from Hillsborough County Management and Budget for giving me an insight about this year's budgets before the hearing. Despite the fact that we are in a tricky situation due to COVID-19, I appreciate all the efforts that the county commissioners are putting into Hillsborough County. I believe with the passing of this year's budget, we can see a much stronger infrastructure in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last speaker I had that signed in for budget public comment that now closed the public comment section. So therefore, it is appropriate for the board to discuss any potential millage or other changes to the budget. Any millage or other changes to the budget. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate at this time, I'd like to move approval of the entire flag list.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is any further discussion on the motion? Let me say, let me say this. I will, I would not be voting for the flag list. You heard Ms. Wise in her comments say how important it is, how difficult it's going to be for the next year's budget that you all are going to be facing here, and we don't know what the outcome is going to be as this pandemic continues to to move along. I know that your flag list is vitally important. I mean, I understand that. I've been down that road before. It's vitally important to you to get those dollars to those people. But at this particular point in time and what we're going through, that $600 that we're utilizing for the flag list could go a long way next year, believe it or not. It could do, it could make a difference. I know it'd make a difference on those that you put on that list, but it could make a major difference when you have to come back next year and start working on the budget. So with all due respect to each and every one of you, I understand why you're doing it, but I just in good conscience can't do that, knowing what the budget's going to be like next fiscal year. So, Mr. Merman, you recognize?
Thank you for a question. The flag list includes the surplus that's left over with the flag list. Is a separate motion going to be made for the remaining amount to go into reserves?
I don't think so because of the flag list that Mr. Brickley showed us did not have that on there. Am I right, Mr. Brickley?
That's correct. The balance that's remaining will just naturally go into reserves.
Oh, it will?
Yes.
What was that balance again?
$1,825,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion on the motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Please call the roll.
Miller?
No.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Chairman Miller voted no.
Okay. Is there any other discussion we need to have on the budget or the millage? Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I need to make a motion for this one, but I just want to make a request to the administrator that that approximately $1.8 million that's being put into reserves be in front of the board next year when we do the budget, just to give us an idea of of what it's going to be used towards, you know, whether that be to plug certain holes in the budget, or if it's going to still be available as a surplus or what have you.
Okay. Any other, Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. And I will echo Commissioner White's comments in the sense that it's nice to know what it's going to go to. Or as we go through the year, there will be, as Commissioner Miller has mentioned, there'll be things that come up, as they have over the last year, that we've added to this year's budget. So, but keeping a running tab of those reserves and how they've been set aside for for tough times, I think, and to prioritize the people of our county, I think is an important process. So I thank you for the comments, and I thank you for approving the flag items that I had on my list. So thank you very much.
Is there any other discussion on the budget or the millage? Commissioner Kemp, sorry, Commissioner Overman, you still want to say something? Mr. Overman?
Sorry. I just had to sit down, yeah. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, it's appropriate to have Mr. Kevin Brickley read. It's a, we're getting a lot of feedback. I'm sorry. At this point, it's appropriate to have Mr. Brickley to read the required information to the record. Mr. Brickley, you recognize?
Thank you. Prior to approving the millage resolution, we need to read into the record certain information. The taxing authority is the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. The aggregate rollback rate is 8.4695 mils. The proposed aggregate millage rate of 8.9039 mils represents a 5.13% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. The millage rates to be adopted for tax year 2020 are countywide general revenue, 5.7309 mils. Unincorporated area municipal services taxing unit, 4.3745 mils. Library services, 0.5583 mils. Voted general obligation debt for environmentally sensitive lands, 0.0604 mils. Voted general obligation debt for unincorporated area parks and recreation, 0.259 mils. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adopt the millage resolution and presented by staff. The resolution has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the county attorney's office. I think I have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Is there any discussion? I see no hands. Please call the roll on the motion.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. I would now entertain a motion to adopt the budget resolution as presented by the staff. The resolution has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the county attorney's office.
So moved.
Motion about Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Overman. Is any further discussion? Seeing no hands, please call the roll on the motion.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearing on the budget. We will now reopen the CIP public hearing. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes, I'm here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum?
Thank you. Again, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to take public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2025 capital improvement budget prior to board adoption. The Director of Budgeting Management will present an overview on the proposed capital improvement program. Mr. Brickley?
Thank you. Board members, the capital improvement program is a five-year program from fiscal year 21 through fiscal year 25 and totals $2.45 billion. We continue to have an active CIP program. FY21 includes ongoing funding of continued construction of two new and one replacement fire station, four consolidated and hardened maintenance facilities. Also included is a financial system upgrade, various library renovations, continued activity on synthetic turf fields, water set sports complex, replacement for the La Paloma Head Start facility, improvements to the Northwest Transfer Facility, and beginning work on the One Water Campus and various LED and solar projects. At this time, it would be appropriate for you to take public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brickley. We're now open up a public comment. I have one speaker that signed up for public comment under the CIP agenda. Gerald White?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Gerald White, Hillsborough County community activist. I just want to ask the board to communicate with the Supreme Court of the state of Florida. They are hurting the citizens of Hillsborough County with the delay of a decision on the transportation tax. Every day that there's a delay is a delay in progress for transportation needs for the citizens of Hillsborough County. And I would just ask the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, to communicate in writing by way of the chairman to the Supreme Court that the people, 1.4 million people, need a decision from this court on that tax. Every day that you don't have a decision is a day that the people are hurting in transportation improvement. And so we need that decision. As the third branch of government, you know, equal partner in providing services to the people of Florida, the people of Hillsborough County, and they are not delivering. And we vote for the Supreme Court. The people of Hillsborough County are the ones that put them on the bench. And so we need those folks to get to work and give us a decision. And as a body, you guys are our voice. The men and women of the county commission board is the voice of the people of this county. Ask them for a decision. Stop this delay and give us an answer so we can get going with the needs of the people of our community. That's my concern relative to improvements in our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. White. That's the only name I had for any speakers during the CIP budget. I'm sorry, CIP public hearing. And now close the public comment. Is there any discussion concerning the CIP program? Any discussion? Any discussion? I would now entertain a motion to adopt the capital improvement program. Resolution is presented by staff. The resolution has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the county attorney's offices. Motion by Commissioner Kemp, sorry, motion by Commissioner Irvin, second by Commissioner Merman. Seeing no hands, please call the roll on the motion.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Brickley, is there anything further to come before us tonight?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Administrator Wise, is there anything further to come before us out of your office tonight?
No, sir. Thank you all.
Ladies and gentlemen, go Lightning.
Yes.
Go Lightning. We don't want to play New York another game. Go Lightning. With that being said, you got about an hour or so to get yourself ready for the game. Everyone, take care, stay safe, have a great weekend. Go Lightning.
Lightning. Go Lightning.
We're journey.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody. Bye.